All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. My name is Greg Mingarelli, I'm the mayor of the city of Prescott. And I'm gonna kick things off tonight with a few comments before we actually have our presentations. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We felt like it was important to have a larger venue, and we have lots of people here tonight, so thanks for coming. And we wanted to do it in the evening as well, so folks could make it here after work. Lots of things going on this time of year, I do apologize if this conflicted with something, but we tried to do our very best to make it work for everybody. I want to also thank Tour Prescott, if you got a ride from them from the parking garage. I want to thank our city staff, they did a great job setting all this up. There was a lot of work involved getting everything here and set up, so let's give our city staff a hand, thank you. And also, I want to thank Prescott Unified School District for allowing us to be here. There's a lot going on here tonight with some other activities, and they are very, very accommodating, so thank you to Prescott Unified School District for allowing us to be here. Okay, well, the city has been meeting with Arizona Eco Development for several weeks, and we felt it was important at this point to give an update on where those talks have led us up to this point. So we're simply here to let you know where we're at in those negotiations. Nothing's been finalized yet, we don't have a final deal, so to speak, yet. But after having met for a number of weeks, we felt like, for transparency's sake, it was important to get in front of the public and let you know where we're at. Furthermore, this is just an additional public meeting, this will not trump any part of the required process of the applicant going through the necessary steps required by Prop 400. So think of this just as an additional public meeting to get the word out, it doesn't trump any of the normal process. I would like to say it's been a real pleasure working with Arizona Eco Development, as well as Save the Dells, among others that have been involved. And appreciate everyone's patience and help along the way to get where we are today. Please keep in mind that at this point, we're working at a very high level with the applicant. We understand there's lots of details to be figured out, and I'm sure you have lots of questions, but we'll have to do that at a later time. At this point, it's important to at least work out the major deal points of the annexation. So we likely won't have a lot of answers to very specific details because they have not yet been worked out, we're still trying to kind of get the big pieces of the deal figured out. In terms of decorum, this is probably unnecessary, but just humor me for a minute. I know that preserving important open space can be emotionally charged because it's very important to all of us, but I would ask that we'd have civil discourse in our meeting tonight so that we can hear each other. It's very important that the room be quiet so that we can listen to each other's views and presentations, and I would ask that we'd all be respectful of one another in the next two hours. So let me give you the agenda real quick. The first thing up will be Mr. Giesi with Arizona Eco Development. He will present first, and then the council will have an opportunity to ask questions and give comments. Then city manager Michael Lamar will present for the city, and again, the council will have the opportunity to respond. Then Save the Dells will give a brief presentation, and then at that point, we'll open it up to public comment, and you need to fill out a public comment card. Sarah, where are the public comment cards?
Public comment cards are in the back of the auditorium, and we have several staff members back there that are collecting them, and then we'll bring them up to me in the order that they have been received.
Okay, thank you for that, Sarah. So you will have three minutes to ask questions, give comments. We want to get as many of you through as possible, but we will end this meeting at 7:30. We'll do our best to write down all of your questions as you present, and then answer as many of those as we can at the very end of the meeting before 7:30. So with that, I think we're all set. Again, thanks so much for coming. First up is Jason Giesi with Arizona Eco Development. Hopefully he's around here somewhere.
There he is.
Sorry about that, I was looking for my notes. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to start by saying thank you. The process has been difficult, it was expected to be difficult. The goal, from the day of our voluntary petition to annex this piece of property, was to bring it into the city of Prescott. The reason that we are focused on the Prescott annexation is that, probably boils down to more than anything else, the piece of property, specifically the piece of property that has drawn so much concern, the Point of Rocks, is uniquely Prescott. As a Prescott resident, over the last 25 years, it didn't feel right for us to try to do anything other than present this property and opportunity to this community. I'm not gonna spend a bunch of time on the past, because I don't see the point. What I'd like to do is launch straight into the map. I know that there's decorum, there's rules here that we're dealing with tonight. I'm an informal speaker, I'm happy to be interrupted by questions from the council so that we can answer questions, talk about issues as I move through my presentation. That seems to be fine. So, the map presently is set on the southern annexation parcel. The area of the Point of Rocks, I can't imagine there's anybody who doesn't know where they're at, but the Point of Rocks specifically would be right here, at the junction between the Iron King Trail and the Peavine Trail. Large rock formation here, smaller rock formation here. So, the heart of the Dells might be described as this general area. Our maps have evolved since our early presentations to include larger pieces of open space. This map is an overlay of a map that was presented previously, which I would call our second map, that shows a resort down in N, as in Nancy, right here. Open space, development along the Iron King Trail and the Peavine Trail. This is Low, referred to as No Name Creek, development up over the top. The difference in this map, and what we're prepared to work on to try to make this deal, is that the crosshatch area, which is now grown and is generally here, represents approximately 475 acres. The 475 acres is a topo line. It includes No Name Creek, it includes all of the rock formations that we've been talking about, and it includes the opportunity to Save the Dells. So, what we're looking for, I would imagine most folks have read the newspaper article, from day one, instead of trying to sell the Dells to the city of Prescott, we've been trying to trade the city of Prescott for water. That water would then be used to transfer density out of this area, where we lose land that would be developed, and move it north of Highway 89A. We'll get into that as I move the map around and we move through it. But the potential opportunity before all of us is to make a deal that includes preserving this land forevermore. In meetings, that's been discussed as title going to the city of Prescott and potentially going on to a third party to hold it. There are some concerns that have been expressed, that it might be better if Central Arizona Land Trust owned that land someday. We're indifferent to that, that doesn't bother us. To finish out this map, the general or approximate limit of development would be in this area. I refer to this block of land as the farm, so for those of you that have been in the Prescott area for a long time, you'll remember that Highway 89A comes through the property here, and this is how you used to go to Prescott Valley, the back way from Prescott. This land is flat, there aren't rocks, suitable for development, and I would say that, generally speaking, folks have been fine with development in that location. To orient people, we didn't go that far, but we have some of the Dells and Walden Farms, it's not as highlighted, but generally, so everybody can understand. This is the Dells subdivision. This subdivision is masqueraded. This is Walden Farms, also masqueraded. Granite Creek then would be running along the sides of the property. This is the Key Kefir Horse Farm. Any questions at this point?
Jason, are you gonna talk about, you mentioned the resort was down here, do you have a proposal for what would go?
Thank you, mayor, I wasn't forgetting on purpose. So, as part of the master deal, if you will, what we're willing to entertain, if we can get traction, is relocating the resort from this location here, up top to Parcels K and L. This location is the location of a potential resort on the Prescott general plan currently. So, this would then conform with the Prescott general plan. Thank you for reminding me.
And access to that, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Excuse me?
Access to that resort?
So, there's a challenge here. If we can get momentum and we can head towards the true public process, access across the Peavine Trail is vital to support this resort. We have a second access that would come through the Dells subdivision here, and it's not an appropriate access for this use, to wind our way through the Dells subdivision all the way over to a resort. We would want to come off of the roundabout here, we would need to cross the Peavine Trail and access the resort from within our property, using this access point through the Dells as secondary access for emergency, fire, et cetera.
So Jason, in your original proposal, there was five crossings of the Peavine and the Iron King. So this is one crossing, that's it?
Well, we have an existing crossing in this location presently, that accesses Center Point East Drive into the Dells, et cetera. There is a second access point that's been on the long-range plan here, which would link all the way over to the roundabout in this location on Highway 89. So that would be the second access existing, new and planned for, I don't know, for 20 years. Access here would be different than what was proposed. We actually had two access points, one further down here you can see, one up high, and then the Iron King access point that we have from the town of Prescott Valley would be of no use.
Where's the railroad bridge, the old railroad bridge?
So, I believe, Steve, that you're talking about the raised part of the Peavine Trail?
Yes.
So, I would call it the big berm, but the great separation opportunity is access in this location. The problem would be bringing a road in via the open space.
Okay.
And that's why I've been pointing up into this location to stay out of the open space.
Thank you.
Nothing else on this map? We can always come back to it. All right, so John Heine, I hope I, oh, I got lucky, I picked the right arrow. Okay, so the scale gets a little bit big. This subdivision has been on our application since day one, along with the industrial and tech. Nothing has changed in this area is the net takeaway. The question would be, with water that we would potentially get from the city of Prescott, where would we use that water, and how would it be used? So, the conversation, negotiations, and I'm gonna move this map just a little bit the other way, and then I'll have to toggle around a bit. To orient folks, this is the Granite-Dells Traffic Interchange. This property is already in the city of Prescott. The pink nodes are owned by Arizona Eco. This piece is owned by a party that we have nothing to do with. So approximately a mile to the east on 89A from the Granite-Dells Parkway Traffic Interchange is the southwest corner of Section 33, which is a section that we own. With the water in the trade, what we would propose to do is water up Section 33. Section 33 would be watered up with density, meaning it's a subdivision. I can only estimate for you the dwelling unit count, we've done no engineering, no planning to figure it out, so based on my experience, I'm gonna tell you that this piece of property could support 1,000 to 1,300 houses. It would be as a separate subdivision. The subdivision would potentially be in Yavapai County and serviced by Prescott Water and Sewer. Access to this piece of property would come out of the annex piece, as well as, long-term, the town of Prescott Valley has applied for the right-of-way to extend Glassford Hill Road Traffic Interchange, which is right here, to the north. In addition to Section 33, to the northeast of the north annexation parcel is Section 21. This property would also be watered up, and that property would be watered up at the two-acre minimum. It presently is zoned for two-acre lots, and this would be a, the character of this development would be more of a rural Williamson Valley type of a development. So density, a section 640 acres, it's two-acre zoning, so approximately 320 units. The reality of that is, once you lay it out, detention, et cetera, roads, it won't be 320, but 320 would be the max.
So Jason, then, can we, your 21 and 33 would remain in Yavapai County?
Yes, ma'am.
And would be serviced by City Water?
Yeah, so services, let's just go over the whole lineup. Water and sewer would be City of Prescott under the proposal. Streets would be private, in my estimation. CAFMA would be the fire provider, the sheriff's department would provide for police protection, and it would be private trash collection.
So, let me ask a question, Jason, from my standpoint. Prescott's anticipated in their general plan over the past five years, and over many general plans, that this area, for the most part, was in the general plan as a pre-annexation area, to let people know that eventually, these lands may come into the city of Prescott. Back in 2000 and 2001, there was a line drawn in the sand with Prescott Valley and Chino Valley as far as annexations into one community opposed to the other. That line in the sand still stands, does it not?
So, my understanding, Steve, would be that the IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement, expired in 2016, off the top of my head. It had a sunset provision, and just so everybody can further understand now that I know what you're asking or talking about, the IGA split Section 33 in half.
Correct.
The eastern half going to Prescott Valley potentially, the western half going to Prescott.
Okay, and that was done, a lot in the reason, to protect the airport and also to protect the boundaries of the different communities. But one thing that's intriguing to me, the whole idea of watering up these sections that are in the county, the very idea of that section you're talking about there, when you start talking about 300-plus homes on two-acre minimums, you could be talking about 300 wells and 300 septic systems in the county, that does anybody absolutely no good whatsoever when it comes to the environment. So from my standpoint, when you start talking about whether we have the water or not have the water, with our professionals that we've had, give testimony over and over again to the council, we have the water in the city of Prescott through our water portfolio, through the state of Arizona, with a 100-year water source guaranteed, that we are able to bring these sections in without it harming the city of Prescott's water supply. So, that's what I'm looking at, when you start talking about doing the right thing for the environment and hooking up our private sewer, our public sewer, being able to recharge, we're showing right now through the city of Prescott, through the Granite-Dells, because it's a new development, that 90-plus percent of everything we pump into that development, we're recharging back into our sewer system and putting it back into the aquifer, based upon Proposition 400 to permanent recharge. So I just say to most people out there that are listening, there's a very big positive of knowing that some point in time, this is gonna develop, and the question is, is whether the city of Prescott has some control, along with the developer, on how it develops, and if we can take it. We have the capacity at our sewer plant, we've built it to take on our maximum capacity, which includes these areas, and also, we have the water to provide. So I just want people out there to understand that there is a trade-off.
Thank you.
Jason, what would build-out be, how many years are you looking at?
So, it gets sticky because of these things called recessions. Conventional math, 15 to 20 years. When we look at this from the different project types, some projects will move faster than others because of the price point and affordability. I'll pick specifically on the southern piece, there it goes. This piece of property will be high-end, this is gonna be expensive, it's gonna go slow. When we look at our northern subdivision, we're specifically targeting, it's hard to say entry-level here, because 85% of the buyers are pre-retirees or retiree, but if we were in a metro area, this would be an entry-level product type, because we clearly have a need in central Yavapai County, not just Prescott, to have more affordable housing, and I say it that way because affordable housing is a legal term of art. You know, it's attainable, everybody comes up with their own word, you guys understand what I'm talking about.
Thank you, mayor. Jason, we've talked about a couple of things, the bright pink, that's around 89A there. So that is, we've talked about that being 40/60 commercial, no lower than 50/50 commercial.
So, Amazon came along. The Great Recession comes along, and then there's Amazon, and now we can buy, do our Christmas shopping, maybe someone's Christmas shopping right now. So the need for sticks and bricks retailers has changed tremendously. My concern is that, when you have a large landmass that's already in the city of Prescott, it's zoned commercial, I don't see an auto mall, I don't see a Walmart. Grocery store, sure, but to give folks an idea, a grocery-anchored neighborhood center like Sprouts in downtown Prescott, it's on 12 to 15 acres, it's approximately 150,000 square feet. To give you an idea of scale, because the grocery store would certainly go on this corner, that's probably, there's big slopes and drainage, but I mean, it's like this much land. So this is a massive piece of property, and one of my concerns has been to be transparent and say, hey, we need different, we being AED, need the ability to have different uses, like multifamily, high-density residential, which conventionally would work well as a buffer to the Dells Phase 1 in this location. So getting directly to the question, there's been a debate as to how much commercial, what is it reasonable to expect? What's realistic in the Amazon world? And so, yes, the figures that have been represented are true, the target on it would be 60/40, 60% being commercial, 40% being residential, with a max or a floor or a ceiling, however, someone looked at it, of 50/50.
And then I have one other point. If you could go back south to around the Dells area and where the resort is, where it's been moved to at this point, there's also been discussion about resort or nothing. That if it doesn't, if it doesn't develop into a resort, which is wonderful for the city of Prescott, and that we get the bed tax, we get a destination resort, if it doesn't go there, then the discussion has been that it would stay open space.
So, and as you know, I haven't answered that question directly, and I'm not gonna answer it tonight.
Well, it's just on the table.
It is on the table, that is absolutely fair to say, and the other thing that I would add to it is that Stuart Swanson wants the resort, and so, the resort is an important component of the package. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Jason, very good presentation so far. I have a question about water, how much water in total are you asking for from the city? And can you give a breakdown of the proportion, and what water are you bringing to the table? Thank you.
So, our present position is that we're asking for 1,082 acre-feet of water. Included in the 1,082 acre-feet are the 375 acre-feet that our company owns. So, the way I do the math, there's 707 acre-feet net that's being requested from the city of Prescott. As far as the breakdown goes, Kathy, I don't have that in front of me, but the city has provided actually a nice worksheet that broke down the commercial, industrial, residential, multifamily, et cetera. And so, the issue is not the uses, it's the amount. And so we get straight to it, the issue is actually the value. So when you look at a deal that might be coming into focus, that allows for approximately 1,000 acres of land to be traded to the city of Prescott for 707 acre-feet of water, the question becomes, how do you value that? How do we know that's fair? On both sides of the table?
I'm sorry, can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
So you mentioned 475 acres dedicated to the city down here?
Yes.
The balance of your 1,000 acres is where you're talking about? Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. The balance is the 513 acres at the end of the runway. This map has not changed since the original submittal. That would give the city of Prescott the ability to extend the runway as far as they would like, on one hand. Secondarily, it takes into account the impact zones that the Federal Aviation Administration regulates, the way an airport is regulated, so that the amount of land would give Prescott complete freedom to do as it sees fit, when it sees fit, forevermore. Okay, so back to valuation, thank you.
Jason, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Going back to your southern section and referencing the resort, you're looking at a primary access point to that resort of one at-grade crossing of the Peavine Trail, correct? So this is proposed to be a 200-room resort, is that correct? What's your estimation of the number of guests, vendors, maintenance, crossings per day that would be needed to cross that Peavine to support a 200-room resort?
It's a good question, and just, I'm having a little trouble hearing you fill, so I'm gonna repeat it so everybody can hear it. The question that was asked of me is, we're asking for one at-grade Peavine Trail crossing, again, approximately in this location, to service a resort that would have 200 rooms. And the question is, what would the occupancy be, and how is it serviced by vendors, whether that's the food truck, or event trucks, or whatever may be going on at a facility like that? The answer is, is that we haven't estimated this stuff yet, and the reason that we haven't estimated is, we haven't even entered the official annexation and rezone process. We've been focused on high level to see if we can get, at least in the same church, maybe not the same pew, but make sure that there's a meeting of the minds, because... maybe not the same pew, but make sure that there's a meeting of the minds because there may be people that think that I enjoy this. But the meat grinder that is an annexation is not fun. It's not fun for me, it's not fun for these folks, the staff, or you folks. And so, the goal here tonight is to expose where the negotiations are at today. If things look like they can be narrowed down and a deal can be achieved, the next step would be scheduling, planning, and zoning. Obviously, if we're in an impasse and we can't get there, then what we would do is push away from the annexation because we have no desire to work for the next six months, nine months, I'm guessing, and end up dead on arrival. It would be a waste of all of our time, lot of energy, and frankly, I don't enjoy the state of the city of Prescott. We either need to get on a deal and make it, or move on.
So, I'm sure you're getting back to Kathy's question. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew.
I'm trying.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I wanted to make sure everybody knew the 1,000 acres you're talking about when you start talking about what's for trade.
Okay. Everybody's clear on the 1,000 acres, mas o menos? Any questions there? Okay. So, 1082, just recap, kind of get back into the flow of that question. 1082, 375 would be our water that in essence, we would turn over to the city of Prescott. My presumption is that the city of Prescott would certificate that water and add it to its portfolio. The other option would be to just hold that water right into the future, use the water in the lake that we take down every year for recreation purposes and recharge. Not my decision, but those are the two obvious opportunities or paths that the city of Prescott could take. So 707 net acre-feet of water from the city of Prescott, as I do the math admittedly because we're going to hear about another number later. And what I looked at, because I thought it was interesting to look at, is what's the value of water? That's been a popular question in the negotiations. As I understand the value of water, it's approximately 18,000 acre-foot in central Yavpoy County. The source of that would be West Water Research out of Phoenix, Arizona, which is the only firm I know that tracks other types of water in the state of Arizona. When you take 707 times $18,000 an acre-foot, that equates to $12.7 million, rounded. If you divide $12.7 million by 1,000 acres, in essence, we've traded for the water at $12,726 an acre. An acre in Coyote Springs right now is going to run you $20,000 to $25,000 an acre. And I bring that up because that number is incredibly low. There have been times when there have been accusations that we are greedy, that we are trying to, in essence, extort the city of Prescott. I don't see how anybody could do the math and draw that conclusion based on the value in the deal. The value would inure to the city, the public, and AED. And what I'm trying to do is get to a win-win-win deal so that we can all move on with our lives. That's my goal. And Kathy, I don't know if I've exactly answered your question, so if you have a follow-up...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, Jason, I just want to point something out. I wrote an article about, gee, let's see, it must have been about nine months ago, in Prescott Living Magazine, where we researched all of the Dells, all of the property for open space and what we've paid for it. So just for information, for the public to know, that in 2008, the city purchased Granite Gardens, 80 acres for $4 million, and that was at, right at $50,000 an acre. And, I'm sorry, Granite Gardens was actually $83,000 an acre. A lot of money that we have, the city has spent to purchase property, $60,000 an acre, $83,000 an acre, and $50,000 an acre to purchase property in the Dells in the past. So just, it's on the record, and you can pull up that magazine. I think it's good to look at what we've done in the past.
Thank you, Billy.
Jason, can you tell us a little bit more about your water rights? Are they surface water rights, groundwater, grandfather irrigation?
Our water right is complicated, and I'm going to make it as simple as I can. So our water right dates to the late 1800s. A man named John Duke was the first guy to take rocks and mortar and make a dam. We now call it Watson Lake. So our water right, the first step of certificating the water right to use it for development was to go to SRP. So Craig McConnell was the city manager at the time, and I'm going to tell you, this process started five years ago. We knew that if we did not get SRP sign off on our water right, there was no way to certify it. So we spent two years. I went to every meeting personally because I wanted to learn. And the net result of that effort is that SRP recognizes our water right at par, meaning 100% or 375 acre-feet. The next step, if the goal would be to certify that water, meaning legally change the use from a water right that is used to water a pasture today to a, I'm trying not to be too technical, certify it so that it can be used for development. That is a second step that would go through ADWR. The process is called severance transfer, where you sever the right, which exists on these farm fields in this location, and then you have to designate where it's going to be transferred to. So in this example, and what we've been working on, is we did not apply for annexation until we knew that SRP was not going to challenge the water right. That's huge. For those who maybe are new to town, SRP controls probably 97% of the water rights on the Verde River. So to have SRP recognize our right was monumental. Next step would be to apply for severance transfer. Process probably takes another two years, multiple public meetings. And the question will be, what is the net amount of acre-feet that that water right can be certificated at? So off of memory, Watson Lake is a 6,800 acre-foot impound. Our water right is 375. We believe that our water right exists at the bottom of the lake because it was first. SRP agrees with us. So there will be a struggle. There will be a fight. I don't know, what I've been told to expect is up to a 5% discount on 375 at the end of that process. Our water attorney is very knowledgeable, and that's the best information that I have for you. Did I answer your question? Thank you.
I have a question, Jason.
Nope. Yes, sir.
What are your rights underdeveloping in the county? And does the county require open space?
So, the ranch presently, which is approximately 15,000 acres, anybody can look it up on GIS at their home or their phone right now, is zoned RCU 2A. So the entire ranch is zoned for two acre lots, as it exists. When we get into development rights, that means different things to me because of what I do for a living. If we develop in the county per our existing zoning, and we don't ask for anything from the county in this case, we can build two acre lots as a matter of right. Those lots would have to be serviced by utilities, drilling a well and using some of our paper water rights, because we own other types of water, to create those subdivisions. The obvious one that obvious, that gets talked about is you take property, it's called an unsubdivided land division. You bust it up in 36 acre chunks, you can sell that. It then is allowed to break down to two acre parcels. All of those would have wells and septic tanks. So when we look at Coyote Springs or Paquito Valley, that's that form of development. Am I answering your question?
Yeah, you are. What, are there open space requirements in the county?
Oh, that's what I missed. I knew I missed something. So if we went with the subdivision, and let me do this by way of example. So obviously, asking to take water from Prescott and sewer, attach it to this piece of property, does not allow us to develop it in two acre parcels. Okay? So our right is two acres, but we would have to apply for a rezone, and it's called a PAD, just like in the city of Prescott, a Planned Area Development, which would require 25% open space. So when I provide a range of 1,000 to 1,300 units, I'm guessing based on my experience that when we get into open space, roads, drainage, slopes, it probably yields on the low end of that range, is my guess.
Okay. So you're saying that the county does have a requirement for open space?
For Section 33, to do what I would intend to do with it, I would have a 25% open space requirement I would have to deal with.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Jason's going to be around, but it'd be convenient if you had anything else on his presentation at this time? Anybody?
Mayor, I do. So in the annexation piece in the south, Jason, what's the percentage of open space that we've got on the table?
Well, it's massive. And actually, I don't know the answer to the question because it's so large that it's beyond any requirement ever.
Thank you.
Councilman Good?
I apologize for my laryngitis, but I'll try to be as loud as I can. Those two county parcels that would be outside of the city of Prescott boundaries would not be subject to our current navigation easement requirements for owners. But they would be certainly impacted by overflight from aircraft. Would you be willing to require those potential owners to agree to an navigation easement so that we know that they wouldn't sue the airport for noise impact?
So I'm not going to give you a definite answer today, Phil, but it'd be a rational question to be asked of us. So I haven't thought of that at all, to tell you the truth.
I think it is important. That's the reason we put it into effect, because they can sue the airport directly, and the city would then have some liability involved. So I think that's important. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for Jason at this time?
I have one.
Councilman Blair?
Jason, you brought up the fact that if the city of Prescott waters you up in the county, one thing I know is, number one, what costs the city the most money is public safety, which is our police and our fire. There's some merit to it being in the county, but there's huge merit to being able to provide water and sanitary sewer. The question I would have is, the city tends to have a higher standard in development in the city of Prescott. Through a development agreement, would you consider the development standards of the city of Prescott for those parcels?
So, as it relates to the water use policy, I've already committed in private meetings that that's something that is acceptable, and we would accept in the development agreement.
I appreciate you saying that. I haven't been privy to these private meetings, so I think it's important that people here listen to that. There's also been the conversation, being outside the city of Prescott, what we do with our water customers that we serve, which are many, Hokey Gannon Williamson Valley Road is one of them, where we charge them a 30% upcharge being outside the city limits. Are you willing to do that as well?
I'd love to ask you for a discount, but you can't treat me differently than the other folks. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Oh, I just have one comment. I seem to remember hearing there was a plan to maybe realign the pevine into a more better place than where it is currently planned.
So let me just move the map. And, okay. Presently, the pevine, which is a bit hard to see, so I'm going to try to trace it for you all, crosses underneath 89A in a box culvert here, and then proceeds up and across Granite Creek, and goes up this western side of Granite Creek, the eastern side of the Prescott Air Park generally. There is an agreement that has not been consummated, it's drafted, to take the pevine and route it up the eastern side of Granite Creek in order to achieve the connectivity on the long-range trail plan all the way to Chino. So that is an agreement that we have agreed to, the particulars of which obviously are affected by whether we're annexed into the city of Prescott or not. So I would describe it as, we're generally ready to sign and record in Prescott. Should we not be in Prescott, we would still have agreed to make that deal, and we intend to fulfill it. But we would have to be very careful as it relates to the ability to get utilities, roads, et cetera, in and around that trail.
And it would be a lot more aesthetically pleasing, the new route, correct?
I think it's very fair to say that the new route is wonderful in comparison to the old route. Yes.
A little further from the sewer treatment plant.
A little further from the sewer treatment plant, little more character on the eastern side of Granite Creek, and it's got more meander in it instead of just a straight shot.
Thank you.
Good question. All right, for the sake of time, we need to move on to city of Prescott. Jason, thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Michael Lamar, city of Prescott.
Sure trying here. Michael's pictures, is this your vacation, or what is this?
Yes, it's relevant to the topic, Mayor. Just give me a minute, all right? All right. No, actually, yeah, my Christmas vacation was on the Watson Lake Trail, so it's very exciting. Okay. Good evening. First off, kind of dovetail with what the mayor had to say earlier, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I am a firm believer that better public policy decisions are made when citizens actively engage their local government in a constructive manner. So thank you for being here. And before I get into the nuts and bolts of the city's current position and offer, I want to share a brief personal anecdote about my first hiking excursion in the Dells. About two weeks after moving here from Georgia, on a Saturday morning when my wife and daughter were out of town, I decided to hike the Dells alone. I mean, how hard can it be? There's a bunch of white dots, right? Yeah, exactly. Well, within about 30 minutes of hiking from the Flume Trail trailhead, I completely lost sight of the white dots. And quickly had these visions of an emergency search and rescue mission to find the new and not-so-bright city manager. Luckily, after a few moments of panic, I was able to sort of retrace my steps and get back on the trail and to the white dots. So to your point, Mayor, why am I talking about this? Well, the real reason I'm sharing this story with you is the white dots, and more broadly, the trails themselves are very analogous to tonight's informational forum, whereby the city is publicly explaining its ongoing work trying to carve out a path, or a trail, if you will, to succeed. And the white dots positioned in the center of the trail represent this elected body's current shared possession. current shared position in terms of at least a generally acceptable water allocation to AED in exchange for the public open space in the Dells and the land around the airport. However, I think it's important for the people in the audience to keep in mind that the white dots are placed in the dead center of a 100-foot trail easement. And as such, I'm sure there are elected officials on this stage willing to veer off the dots, in other words, tweak the water allocation, offer plus or minus. But that's really for them as individuals to share with you if they are so inclined. That was my anecdote, Mayor.
Very nice.
Apologize. Thank you. John, help me out here. Let's talk about the numbers. I do apologize for the size of this map. I know that I've been looking at it for a really long time, but your exposure is going to be fairly limited. So I want to assure you that the numerical calculations of breakdown are going to be on our website, prescott-az.gov. And if you have any questions that don't get answered in the time we have tonight, please submit them via email, and we will certainly do our best to answer them. Okay, here we go. I'm going to start at the southern annexation portion. There we go. So there are a series of elements in this that have already generally agreed upon by the applicant and the city, where there is disagreement or some work to be done, it's clearly delineated on this map. If you can't see it, as I said, it will be on the website. Also, in terms of the water usage, the water usage was taken from actual real-world similarly situated customers. So as we talk about things like strip mall or mixed use, the strip mall data is from Fry's usage. There's also the discussion in this that Jason's alluded to in some of his negotiations, a medical facility, and the calculations for water use are actually taken from YRMC. So I think it's important to note, as we have this dialogue, that if there's been some fear that the city is pulling these water usage data points out of a hat, it's not the case. It's based on actual water usage data from customers that are similarly situated. And the same holds for the resort rooms. .12 acre feet is actually the citywide average for hotels and motels. So with all those disclaimers, let me get to the point. And the pointer. Which thing on here is the pointer? Can you see that at all? Okay. So this is the southern annexation, and assuming a 500-acre Granite Dells Park and Preserve and 1,000 residential units in these land pods, at .17 acre feet per unit, the H2O required would be about 170 acre feet. Jason mentioned the idea of a resort room, and as I mentioned, the average usage per resort room in the city is about .12. So if you assume 200 rooms, you'd be looking at 24 acre feet for basically the need or the necessity of 194 acre feet for the southern annexation. Shifting gears to the northern annexation. The northern annexation, 1,550 residential units, at .17 acre feet, which is, by the way, the city's average for new construction in terms of water usage per residential unit. The usage is about 263.5 acre feet. And then Jason has some yet-to-be-determined miscellaneous use, industrial, mixed use, light industrial. And I used some data from similarly situated businesses in town, about .25 acre feet of usage. So the land area is about 100 acres. If he maximized his usage, it would be 25 acre feet of water to bring the northern annexation's need to 285, 88.5 acre feet. To talk a little bit about things, he also referenced the two unincorporated land sections. The city's current offer is two acres per unit of water allocation for both land sections. This section happens to be 640. The southern section is 559. Taking the amount of water necessary for both of those, it's about 101.92 acre feet. I did not have Jason's latest plans in terms of two acre tracks on the northern section and the 1,000 to 3,000 units on the southern. So I did an assumption, taking his remaining water after all the other necessary uses, it's about 559 acre feet he'd have off of the 1082. And on average, if he spread it over those two tracks, it's about third acre tracks for both land masses. But as he expressed, it would be higher density, closer to 89A, and then two acre tracks out To jumping a little bit to Granite Dells Parkway, this is the section that's already annexed into the city. However, it does not have a clearly defined water allocation. So I assigned a valuation of 22 acre feet for the commercial element, which, as I mentioned earlier, is exactly what the Fry's and the Fry's Out parcels is using. And then a medical center, which would be 42.3, which again is what YRMC is using. And as Jason mentioned, this land area would be 6040 commercial to residential under a water service agreement with a floor of 5050. And bring your attention to the top, there's just some general notes and deal points. Obviously, the 25% open space requirement for lots developed in the county, that one of two things would happen, all of AED's surface water rights would be completely liquidated is one option that we've discussed, and he would sever and transfer those to the city. In all likelihood, the city would leave them for the foreseeable future in Watson Lake. Or the alternative would be that the 375, we would bring in a third party to look at the value of the 335, and that both parties would live by what the valuation the third party came up with. Also, some further points, I broke down how many housing units you were looking at. With the city's current offer, you're looking at approximately 3,627 housing units. I did a 32.15 acre foot reduction for the non-residential in terms of the water. So you're looking at 3,627 housing units, assuming two people per unit. That's a lot of information to take in all at once, and I understand that. If I could share the hours, I've been involved with this of all of you, to bring you up to speed and me less up to speed, I'd be happy to do that. But again, if there's questions with this from council, they've seen this before, I would be glad to take those on now. And maybe if there's questions from the public, when you open up the public, I could gladly come back and discuss them.
Fair enough. Counsel, questions, comments? Yeah, Alexa?
So Jason's offer is 1082, and what's our total offer?
I'm glad you asked that. It is 648.72. And one of the things I thought was important for the community and also for you guys, and I know Jason's to a point where he agrees with this, is the water has to be tied to land masses. It can't be something that's kind of nebulous and, for lack of a better term, banked. I think it needs to be spread over these land masses that are delineated. It's just a matter of how much water is given and how dense the product is once you give it water.
That's a good question. Just to make it very clear that Jason's, you know, offering 1,000 acres between the south annexation open space and the airport, and currently, you know, I don't know if I want to say our position, I'm going to give council a chance to speak to that, but you're presenting 648 acre feet.
This is the breakdown, Mayor, and I should have gone to that. The current offer is on the left, and Jason's offer is on the right.
Right. Other questions, comments from the council for Michael?
So the the difference between the city and Jason's water is 434 acre feet.
I think that's the math is correct.
Which in the current market, maybe about $10 million.
Well, let's say.
Maser menos.
Jason's calculation is 18,000 acre foot, so 18,000 acre foot times 437.
It's 8,712,000.
Thank you, Steve.
You must run a business.
Yeah. So and as I understand, Jason has a a water portfolio of his own. He has various kinds of water.
I think he has irrigated water rights, but I don't want to speak for Jay. Do you want to come talk about what you have other than the 375?
I was resting. Kathy, you're asking about our portfolio of water outside of our surface water right?
Yes.
So yes, AED owns a water portfolio outside of our surface water right. About 120 days ago, we sold 100 acre feet of that. So I'm going to tell you this off the top of my head, that we probably have 40 to 50 acre feet of historically irrigated water that is good for the Prescott AMA.
Oh, nice. And then I read in the paper today that you're going to be leasing water for your Jasper, one of your Jasper phases from Prescott Valley.
That's that's yet again a different type of water. That is a type two non-irrigation right that we lease from the town of Prescott Valley in order to, when we're grading, you have to condition the soil, which just means wet it. You've got dust control on one hand, and you have compaction on the other. And so we use that water to accomplish those goals instead of potable water out of a hydrant.
So it's more for construction purposes?
It's for construction purposes.
Oh, thank you.
Exactly.
Okay.
Great. Anything else for Michael?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is give the council, before we get to Save the Dells, just briefly go person to person here with the council and just speak to your thoughts regarding the current deal, 648 or whatever you you're thinking right now compared to Jason's 1082. So Councilmember Rusin, would you like to comment on that?
Thank you. As you know, we live in a desert, and we are having a drought currently. It's been going on for 25 years. No end is in sight. It could be the new normal, and water is a very precious, finite resource. And our groundwater tables being monitored by ADWR and their monitoring wells have shown that we're dropping our groundwater table level about two feet a year. And we're out of safe yield. But with with all that in mind, we do need to emphasize sustainable growth. And water manages growth, and our city council manages that water. So it's important that we have a very big decision made here. And the Dells is very precious to us, our open space, preservation of our natural beauty. And this, I just need to emphasize, this is our last ditch effort to save the Dells. If we don't, thank you, if we don't come together and find common ground, I, it would just be heartbreaking. So everyone here, I think, is making an effort to negotiate to save the Dells because as a long-term resident, I remember the open space tax from the year 2000. So it's been 20 years, and we have delivered a message to the city that our quality of life and our open space is very important to us. And I want to thank the city for having this forum. This is something that's never been done, having a study session like this. I want to thank everyone, all the supporters and the people who have saved the Dells because that's a movement that struck an accord in in the city, in the heart of the city. And we must save the Dells. And like I said, we're all here tonight, and this is our last ditch effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Councilwoman Scholl?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks to both Jason and Michael for presenting tonight. I want to really thank Michael. I know this has been a very tough process and a lot of back and forth and playing telephone between Jason and the public and the council and and really kind of herding cats. So that's a very difficult process, and I appreciate you. You know, I think where my concern is, is 1082 and 648 are very different numbers. And I think that there's still some work to be done. I don't see myself being comfortable with the 1082, but I could potentially be comfortable with coming off of the 648 number. I think that we do have to be very conscious about conservation and about our finite resource of water. And I think it's become very clear these past 18 months that saving the Dells, especially the heart of the Dells, is a priority not only for this council but for the public. And I think that's an important to acknowledge. So I think where I stand is I'm not comfortable with 1082, but I'm flexible on the 648.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Siskas?
Thank you. You know, folks, we are this close, this close to what you've all wanted. And it's time to circle up, hold hands, sing kumbaya, and go come to yes. It really is, and I agree with Councilwoman Scholl. I don't think that 648 is going to make it. We are this close again. 648 is not going to make it. And so being that close, I think that we can give a little bit, he can give a little bit, and we'll come to yes. That's the goal. Thank you.
Mayor Protemp?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say to everyone, I so appreciate everybody being here. We've been saying for the last two years that we are working hard to preserve the Dells, and I will tell you, we have been working very hard to get that done. I really applaud our city manager, Michael Lamar. I think we owe him a round of applause. He has worked so hard on this, and it's just been an honor to to try to get to where we are today. We are, as Councilman Siskas said, we are very close, and and I'm thrilled. My my bottle of water is always half full. And and I think I truly believe we can get there. And so I'm asking everybody to hang in there, and let's get this done. It's a huge opportunity for our city. When I did that article that I referred to earlier and saw how much we had actually done already in the Dells, it's very impressive. And that we could add 475, 483 acres in the Dells, the heart of, the most beautiful part of the Dells, would be, we've got to make that happen. And I really appreciate Jason Geese putting that on the table. I also do not want to lose sight of that 513 acres that's up north that will protect our airport and the resort. You know, the city does not make, we do not make money from house tops, rooftops. We basically, it's commercial and it's resorts. That would certainly bring some income into the city. And I will tell you, it would be a destination spot that would bring a lot of people to the city of Prescott, something that we could all be proud. So the resort, the resort is is certainly a great piece, and I really like the idea of the conservation, to put this in a conservation trust. So I just say, let's. So, I just say, let's all work together, let's get it done. I truly believe we're so close, we can get there. Now, I am also with Alexa. I, I think where Jason is is high, where we are is low. And we need to, we need to get in there and do a little bit, a little bit more work on this, and I'm certainly willing to do that. So, again, thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Good?
Well, I think the public is probably happy tonight that I do have laryngitis. So, I'll have to keep my comments somewhat brief. I think the city's offer is pretty well-crafted. I agree that managing our water portfolio well and efficiently is probably the only legitimate way that we can manage the pace of growth that we're all seeing and experiencing. And it's very rapid, and it's impacting the quality of life, traffic, congestion, et cetera. So, we have to be very diligent, to be careful about how we allocate the amount of water that we have as a designated water provider under state regulations. Looking at Michael Lamar's calculations, I've followed this process pretty closely. I feel the city's offer is fair. I think it achieves almost all of the goals that the group that is concerned about saving the Dells, and I'm talking about the primary view shed and public accessibility to that view shed. I do have, as you heard, some concerns about a 200-bed resort being primarily accessed from one at-grade street pathway, whatever. It's pretty easy to do calculations. We're talking about hundreds and hundreds of transit points across the Peabody Trail. So, if you're trying to access the primary view shed of the Dells from the northern point, you're going to have a hard time getting across that trail, I'm telling you, with that many cars going back and forth. So, that's something that has to be looked at.
If we could keep it quiet in the chamber, please, so we can keep moving here?
There's potentially access to the trail from the southern section, but we have to look at the totality of the program. And as Mr. Geese said, the details would be worked out in a planned area development agreement, analyzed through planning and zoning if it's done well. So, you can see from the calculations that were displayed that the primary difference is in the unincorporated area. That's the difference between the city's calculation of about 102 acre feet and Mr. Geese's calculation of about 500-plus acre feet. That is a big, big gap. And those sections that he would like to have watered to be developed, again, are outside of the city limits. We can put some of the details of how that development occurs in a water service agreement, but I'm concerned about the long-term effect of being able to make sure it's done the way it's proposed. As he said, this could take 15, 20 years to, to build out. So, I would say that the city's proposal is reasonable. It provides substantial benefit to the developer and it provides substantial benefit to the community at large. So, I'm supporting the city's end of that proposal, and I think that gap is so big that Mr. Geese is going to have to come well to our direction for me to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Good. Councilman Blair?
Thanks, Mayor. I always like being last. You know, there's a positive and a negative side to this. And the negative side, I think Phil just illuminated it the best. On an annexation, it causes a supermajority. So, if there's somebody on this council that is rubbed the wrong way about what's good for the city or what's not good for the city, this thing fails. And everybody in this room, we've failed. This council that I've been on for 18 years has worked hard in preserving the lands in Granite Dells and Watson and Willow Lake. My mission has always been to try to get septic systems out of here so we don't have lakes and reservoirs that are compromised by E. coli and the very lakes we like to recreate on. We have a responsibility as a city that lives in Yavapai County to do the right things for the citizens that live here. We don't live in an island. And by the way, I'm sure all you folks that live in here live in an annexed neighborhood. Because if you haven't been here since the 1960s, everything's been annexed. Yavapai Hills, the Ranch of Prescott, I can go on and on and on, Haciampa, Steve Siskas, your area, Phil Good. The city today would have done an illegal annexation of Southview where Phil lives because it's not contiguous to the city of Prescott. So, my point is, we look at these things in a vacuum of what good can they do for the community? And I, and I look at it as what good can we do for the citizens that are continuing to move here? And we're not going to stop them. If Mr. Geese and the city can't reach agreement, they're still going to build, they're still going to come, they're going to have septic tanks, they're going to have wells. We, as a city, have the fiduciary responsibility to treat this like a business and to know that the trade-off that we have with lands to water are equal and that we're not jeopardizing our water for development or we're not getting something back. If we can get back lands that protect our airport, if we can get back open space that preserves the remaining part of the Dells, if we can get back the comment that he'll pay a 30% up-charge, we can get back the fact that he's going to plant to our city drought-tolerant palate, what are we talking about that we won't give him water? It only makes sense. People are going to come, whether it's in the county or in the city. So, for us to do the right thing for the region is to step up and do that. I've been chastised many times about not caring about the Dells and the very Dells that I grew up in, in the swimming pool. And I've been working with the state land department, state trust department, and the Parks and Recreation Department, along with Joe Baines, to try to get this to be a northern Arizona regional park. With the help of our representative Noel Campbell, Karen Fans, Steve Pierce, and other people at the state level, maybe we can have that designation and make it something better than it is today. But collectively, we can't look down our nose and say, we're here and nobody else can come. We need to make it the best we can make it. And I intend to work with the city manager, thank you, Mr. Lamar, for all you've done, and continue to work with staff and the council to come to an agreement. Because I fear that day when that vote happens for annexation, that there's two people sitting in front of us that say no, and this whole picture is gone. That's the wrong thing to do. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you, Councilman Blair. Well, I'll just quickly say that it's been a real privilege to work on this with Michael, and I'm very proud of the effort and where we are right now. There is a gap. I'm kind of with Councilwoman Shoal, among others, that I want to save the Dells and get the land at the airport, and I'm willing to continue to work hard and negotiate with Arizona Eco Development. I don't think this deal is had at 648 acre feet. So, we're going to need to continue to roll up our sleeves, work hard with the developer, and figure out where that number is, and I'm willing to move on that at this point because it's important enough, as you said, Councilman Blair, that we need to get this done. It's the right thing to do for the city of Prescott. We've taken enough time. At this point, I want to jump to Amber Fields with Save the Dells. She has a response at this point. There she is. Thanks for being here, Amber.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm Amber Fields, chairman of Save the Dells. I'd like to thank all of Save the Dells supporters that are here tonight and that have stood by our side for over two years as we've worked to protect the heart of the Dells from development. I'd also like to thank the city of Prescott for their good work toward reaching a deal that everyone can accept, not just the developer, and for working in good faith in these negotiations with AED and Save the Dells. The city of Prescott has heard your call to save the Dells loud and clear, and they are doing their best to reach that noble goal. Sometimes people don't understand why I'm so passionate about saving the Dells. Why do I care so much about sparing the Granite Dells from development? Well, it's because this is my home. It's because five generations of my family have called Prescott home, and the Dells are Prescott. We care so deeply about this place because it's in our blood. We have laid our dead to rest here. We are becoming this place, and what we do to this place, we do to ourselves. I want to take a look back and review Save the Dells' original position. I know this is a lot of words, and I don't expect you to read them, but this is our entire official position, position statement. Our objective has always been to achieve a fair annexation deal with AED that would protect, as public open space, approximately 500 acres in the heart of the Dells. AED wants to annex about 2,500 acres of their property into the city. The city of Prescott Land Development Code requires developers to dedicate 25% of their land for open space. So, in total, AED is required to dedicate a minimum of 620 acres. We have always asked that 500 of that 620 acres will be where the public wants it. And that, the open space allocation is contiguous functional open space, meaning that it has high aesthetic value, high recreation value, high wildlife value, and high cultural value. In fact, the 500 acres in the heart of the Dells is the only part of AED's entire 15,000-acre landholding that truly fits the open space definition. We didn't pull the 500 acres out of a hat. We identified the area that best fit the description of what open space should be according to the city's general plan and open space master plan. Our original position, as posted on our website and distributed on thousands of flyers and petitions which many of you may have signed, stated that Save the Dells would not oppose the transfer of city-owned water to AED, as requested by AED, for use in the proposed south and north annexations or on additional AED lands, as long as the priority 500 acres were protected as public open space. Let me say that again. Our original position stated that Save the Dells would not oppose the transfer of city water rights to AED for use in the proposed south and north annexations or on additional AED lands, as long as the priority 500 acres were protected as public open space. Having restated Save the Dells' original positions, I now want to say that Save the Dells finds the city's current offer to AED acceptable and sufficiently in line with our two years of advocacy. Why do I find it acceptable? Importantly, we find it acceptable because if this particular water doesn't go to AED in this grand bargain, it will go to another developer for another development. So, we think it makes sense to use this water as a bargaining chip to save the Dells. Furthermore, under the city's proposal, AED would be moving about 600 houses and hotel units out of the heart of the Dells. And in return, they would be getting enough water to build a similar number of houses to the north of Highway 89A. That seems fair to us. It has always been our position that Save the Dells supports the transfer in housing density out of the Dells and to the north in order to protect the heart of the Dells as public open space. Also, the city's proposed density on those two northern parcels is comparable with the densities AED is currently allowed to develop within the county. Instead of those homes being developed with individual wells and septics, they would instead receive city water and sewer, and the city would get the recharge, which we view as a positive thing. And we can even accept providing additional water to AED for the already annexed commercial area around Granite Dells Parkway in order to protect the Dells because we recognize how valuable the Dells are. So, how far has Save the Dells moved in these negotiations? We have compromised. We've gone from advocating that protecting the 500 acres was a fair exchange for the many benefits of annexation to supporting not only the water needed for annexation, but also giving AED enough water for their commercial area and an additional 600 homes. We'll accept additional homes north of the Dells because we want to save the Dells so badly, and the flats around the airport are a more appropriate place for development. But AED's proposal goes too far beyond what we consider a fair deal to the taxpayers and those concerned with water sustainability. They say that the good sign of, that a sign of a good negotiation is when everyone walks away wishing they got more or thinking they gave too much. But we're not willing to give away the whole farm, and that's what AED is asking for by demanding 1,082 acre feet of water. That amount of water is more than they can justify for the, for even the development they are proposing, and they have not been able to explain that discrepancy. That's troubling. Let's all remember that annexation, annexation into Prescott is a privilege, not a right. So, annexations should be good for both the developer and the public. A deal including 1,082 acre feet of water would lean too strongly in favor of AED's Another point of disagreement between the city and AED is regarding 375 acre feet of AED's water claims. AED wants the city to provide pure, fresh, clean groundwater for their contaminated surfer, surface water claims in Watson Lake. But you see, there are some big problems with that request. AED's surface water claims have not been adjudicated in a court of law, and they are not likely to be adjudicated for decades to come. Why would the city of Prescott take on such a liability and give AED groundwater for those claims? They should not. Furthermore, that surface water that AED claims to own is highly contaminated and subject to uncertain future precipitation, meaning that AED's claimed surface water may simply not exist in the future if we get hotter and drier. It's worth mentioning that if AED chose to develop and use that surface water they claim to own, they would have to invest in costly measures such as a diversion from Granite Creek. They would have to build a water storage facility and a wastewater treatment facility, as well as a distribution facility. Now, I'm no water expert, but I know that the cost of such water infrastructure would be extremely high. So, of course, they're asking the city, asking for the city to just give them groundwater for their difficult-to-develop and highly contaminated surface water. Save the Dells completely, Save the Dells completely supports the city's position in these negotiations, which is that if AED wants to trade water for land, they must sever and transfer their 375 acre feet of water claims in Granite Creek and Watson Lake over to the city of Prescott. And the city would then leave that water in Watson Lake for the people and wildlife of this region. So, you might be wondering, why is Save the Dells up here talking about water, right? Well, I'll admit, it's not our issue. But we are talking about water because it's a part of the negotiations between the city and AED. However, it is very important for people to know that Save the Dells has been clear from the start of the negotiations that we would not support any deal that hinged on an overhaul or a complete rewriting of the water policy to provide water to unincorporated county lands at large. What we could support would be an exemption to the water policy specific to this deal with AED and nothing more. The larger water policy issue is a separate issue to be resolved at a later date and is not part of the city's deal with AED. Jason Geese told me that he thinks he could make $200 million in profits if AED develops in the county without annexation. And he thinks that he could make $400 million in profits from that same development if it's annexed into the city. So, AED could make $200 million more dollars by being annexed into the city of Prescott, yet Jason argues that those profits, which would be a direct result of annexation, should not be factored into the accounting for this grand bargain. Of course, he does. Jason is a developer, and his job is to make as much money as possible. I get that. But it doesn't mean that he should make huge profits from publicly-owned resources without doing what's right for the people of Prescott now and into the future. Before I finish my speech, I need to mention that Save the Dells has laid out many stipulations would be, that would be a part of any grand bargain in order for it to be acceptable for us. And we have requested that those stipulations be laid out in a bulletproof contract in order to ensure that everything goes as planned. I don't have time to go into all of those stipulations here tonight, but they include such things as the acres in the Dells being deeded to the city and placed in a conservation easement for permanent protection, and the stipulation that the land where the resort is being proposed be developed as a resort or nothing. As these negotiations continue to progress in a favorable direction, you will hear more about those details in the future. And we're happy to report that the city has invited Save the Dells to continue to be a part of the negotiations and involved in seeing that any contract be as bulletproof as possible. And we're glad to hear that the city wants to give AED a deadline for making their decision regarding the city's offer. So, please, keep showing up to events, keep writing to the Daily Courier, let the city know that you support their current offer, and encourage all and encourage all parties involved to reach a deal that permanently protects the heart of the Dells as public open space. In finishing, I would like to recognize that Noel Campbell, our Arizona State Representative, is here with us tonight. Thank you for being at this important meeting, Noel. I'd like to invite you to the stage to comment on this important topic.
Good evening. And thank you, Amber and the City of Prescott and the entire Save the Dells organization for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm truly honored. Do you know what really amazes me the most when I look around this room tonight? What a wonderful bunch of ancestors we have gathered here. Save the Dells is a legacy, our legacy. One we must pass on to our children and their children's children. And indeed, to all those who will ever come to this community and to the state of Arizona. Think about it. This auditorium is packed with people who care passionately about the Granite Dells. We all marvel at the Dells' prehistoric rock formations and night skies. We know how vital its clean watersheds are to our own water supply. We understand the Dells' wildlife corridors are essential to the entire ecosystem in this region. And while we use these trails daily for our own pleasure, we recognize the fact that this area is an economic driver of Prescott businesses and our entire region. Most of all, those of us sitting in this room understand we are merely borrowing the Granite Dells and all of its iconic beauty from future generations. So I ask you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and even you, Mr. Giesi, what will your legacy be? Are the Granite Dells worth preserving for this community? Council members, please understand, you have the power with your vote to establish your own legacy and stand with this community and preserve the Dells. As you know, I'm a Republican, as are many of the City Council members. Contrary to some, it is not an anathema for we Republicans to conserve our natural resources or to preserve and protect our wildlife. In fact, President Theodore Roosevelt, known as the Conservationist President, did all that and more for this great nation. He can serve as a role model for Prescott. Therefore, I will close with the words of President Roosevelt as he implored the people of Arizona to preserve the majestic views of the Grand Canyon. His words ring true for the crown jewel of Prescott, the Granite Dells. Leave it as it is. You cannot improve on it. The ages have been at work on it, and men can only mar it. What you can do is keep it for your children and your children's children and for all those who would come after. Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and Mr. Giesi, please join with us in preserving the Granite Dells as our legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Campbell. All right, we have about 25 minutes left for public comment. So what I'm willing to do is go till 7:30 with public comment. How much, how many cards do you have, Sarah?
I have 24 speaker cards.
24, okay. We, I'm sorry, but we're not going to be able to get to everybody during this time. We have 25 minutes. We will hard stop at 7:30. Then I will allow just a couple more minutes for whomever might need to answer some of the questions after we hear from public comment. So you do have three minutes. If you can take less, that allows more people to speak. You can ask questions if you would like, but we won't answer them at that time. We'll just take some notes and try to do the best we can at the end of the meeting. So with that, we do have a couple of microphones out here. Sarah's going to call three people at a time. And we will start with public comment.
The first three cards I have are Gary Beverley, Paula Burr, and J.D. Greenberg. As we do not have the timer that's normally in council chambers for the public comment time, I am setting a three-minute timer. And I will advise you when you have about half of your time left, and then if you're still continuing when you have about 10 seconds left, and then when your time is up, okay?
Okay, thank you. Thanks to the mayor for this meeting to inform the public, and thanks to Jason Giesi and the council for negotiating to protect the Dells. This is a trade for land for water. It's a compromise. It definitely has problems, and it definitely has some room to go. I want you to finish it. It's very close, just arguing over little money. Let's finish the deal and protect the Dells. I can support it because it protects the Dells, and that's extremely important. And I can support it, though, only with a few conditions, four. Number one, a written contract is required that will clearly specify all the provisions in this deal that will be available, transparent to the public, and available for public comment. Until, until we see a written comment and we know the full context of this, it's the Citizens Water Advocacy Group Board cannot make a stand or a position, and the Sierra Club cannot make a stand or a position. So I'm speaking personally at this point. I have a problem with this not requiring, with the parcels to the north of 89A not being annexed. This seems wrong for many reasons, but I can accept it as part of a compromise. However, condition two, the Dells' bargain must stand alone and not be part of a larger, extremely controversial issue, that is, the city's proposal to serve water to unannexed areas.
You're halfway through your time, Mr. Beverley.
We'll debate that policy separately. And I have problems with the water part. A loophole in Arizona water law allowed Prescott to suddenly obtain enough, quote, "legal" water to develop all the land north of Prescott up to Chino Valley, including the two parcels in the deal. This is, this loophole water is paper water. It's not sustainable. Giesi could actually purchase extinguishment credits to fulfill the development of those parcels. That isn't sustainable either. It's all paper water. This is on top of our current water use, which is unsustainable. So, either way, our current and future water use is a problem. This deal makes an existing bad situation worse. But at least we get something in return. It provides an opportunity to protect the Dells. So I'll swallow hard and accept the compromise on the condition that all the effluent from these developments goes to permanent recharge. And secondly, that the development complies with the current City of Prescott policies on water conservation and landscaping. So, conclusion, conclusion, let's finish the deal, swallow hard, and make it happen. Thank you.
Paula Burr?
Yes. I, Amber already spoke and said many of the points that Save the Dells supports, but there are a couple of points that came out in comments that I'd like to address. I think it's important for people to know that the city can apply for a federal grant that would purchase 95% of the land that's needed to extend the airport runway. So in some ways, it's unfortunate that that land is being included in this annexation deal. Also, the price paid for other acreage in the Dells is meaningless because in those land deals, the landowner was not also receiving the additional very lucrative benefits of annexation. So the money that they get paid per acre is in no way comparable to trying to value Jason's land because he is being annexed into the city, which, as he shared with us in negotiations, would be a very profitable deal for him. Also, Mr. Giesi is asking for 300 acre-feet more than can be justified by even his increased densities. So even if we increase densities to, in the southern parcel that's next to the freeway,
You're halfway through.
he would not need 1,082 acre-feet of water. That should be troubling to people that he's asking for 300 acre-feet more water than he needs for even the densities that he is proposing. Thank you.
J.D. Greenberg?
I wish that, I wish that the shirt that I'm wearing that says Save the Dells had Save the Dells Wildlife on it. Because except for a few very passing comments about the wildlife, we are totally ignoring that. And the Dells area is critical to wildlife habitat connectivity in this area. The beautiful pronghorn have been like the ambassadors for this area for decades, and we're losing all of them. And if we don't do something to help save some of the wildlife, it's not going to be Prescott anymore. One of the things that has been shown on a national level is that when you have developments that back up to wildlife corridors, you can charge more for those properties. And I don't know why, I have been saying this for years to city councils, to planning and zoning meetings, and no one seems to be getting the message. For developers, you can be making more money by allowing these corridors through your property. And it's a win-win. It's a win for the wildlife, it's a win for the developer, and it's a win for the residents who come to this community and enjoy seeing the wildlife. So please, as you're doing all of the calculations with rezoning and water allowances and everything else, please don't forget the wildlife. Thank you very much.
Next three cards I have are Nigel Reynolds, Thomas Slayback, and Jim Lundey.
My name is Nigel Reynolds. I've lived in Prescott for over 23 years. And I have been involved in this annexation proposal from the outset. I am not a member of Save the Dells, but I agree with their goals. I'm going to focus on AED's south annexation proposal because nothing yet has been final in the negotiation win hearing tonight. I think that AED's proposed open space is inadequate for this special area in the heart of the Dells. The Save the Dells organization has proposed 500 acres of open space. This acreage has the support of the citizens of Prescott. The recent election of Kathy Rusing to the City Council by an overwhelming majority demonstrated this support, as is the crowd here tonight. The mayor has twice stated his support for about 500 acres. One time was back at the Y.C. Auditorium, if I recall your terms, at the meeting in June. I was hoping to have the map of the development on the screen, the first one that Mr. Giesi showed, but...
You're halfway through your time?
I've, most people can picture that, they've seen it tonight. So I'll just go on without that and hope that you can picture it in your mind. And I do think that the map that AED has given is a very unhelpful map in that it doesn't include on it the following important items, which makes it easier to digest. It doesn't show the Point of Rocks. It doesn't show the Entro Point, which is where the two trails, the Peabody and the Iron King, meet. It doesn't show No Name Creek. It doesn't show Granite Creek. Those are all important parts of this annexation. It doesn't even show Highway 89. I think the access roads into the development are very unclear. Now, the map that I'm picturing in my mind shows 244 acres of open space, which were colored dark green. It also shows some other stuff, which was added up to come to a larger figure for open space, but that is not public open space. I think the...
10 seconds remaining.
Thank you. I guess I'll just sit down and say, I think the places on that map that were put as open space are very poorly chosen, and I hope the city will realize that. And I will send in my comments to the city. Thank you.
Thomas Slayback?
I'm Thomas Slayback, and I want to thank the mayor, the city council, and especially to my fellow citizens for being able to speak here tonight. I am totally in support of preserving at a minimum 500 acres in the heart of the Granite Dells. But I'm not here to speak directly about that, but rather on the water issue pertaining to this trade of land for water. I'm speaking as the former chair of Proposition 400. And if you remember, I spoke here at the last meeting that we had. I'm here specifically about one issue of the proposition, and that is, within annexations occurring into the city, that the effluent that's generated off of those goes to permanent safe yield and does not go to credits so that the city can pump more groundwater. As you know, since 1998, we have been in an overdraft, getting worse year by year. If we allow the city to claim credits and pump more groundwater, and it can be done immediately, we will be digging
Halfway through your time.
a bigger hole for all of our citizens that are currently using water. Therefore, I would like the city to make part of the agreement with AED that any water provided to their areas that are outside of the city limits, that they put a special service contract that such water delivered to those areas, all the effluent created from that, must go to permanent safe yield and not be allowed to have credits to pump more of our groundwater. Thank you.
Jim Lundey?
I'd like to thank the council for their, all the efforts they're putting together to work with Mr. Giesi. And I realized that you guys think you're getting too, what's that? Oh, I want to thank the city council for putting in all the effort to work the details of this back-and-forth negotiation. And I can see that you've really gotten into the details, and you got some philosophies of how to get there. Unfortunately, I came here and I thought that this was a very bad deal, and it set some very bad precedents. I thought it was really a hustle to the taxpayer. And why do I say that? Actually, with the, with the council's new .17 allocation of water from .34 to houses, you really do need about 1,000 acre-feet of water to do about 5,000, 4,500 houses, which is what's involved here. And the reason I think it's a bad deal, and I'm going to try and top-level this, I like third-grade math. 4,500 houses, if you take each house and say it's a $500,000 house, you're talking about, about $2.2 billion of economic housing development. And, you know, if you, if you drop it, you can drop the numbers down a little bit more if you want. And you oppose that to 500 acres in the Dells. Now, I'm not emotionally attached to the Dells. I gotta admit, I'm not a, I'm not a hiker, I'm a skydiver. But the thing is... But the thing is, 500 acres of rocks, now, they're not red rocks, so they probably don't have the major impact of Sedona, but let's say they're worth $100,000 an acre. That's $50 million. Now, I came in here realizing it was going to be a trade of 500 acres, but it's really 1,000 acres, I understand. So, $100 million. I tell you, I'd really like to make that deal, a billion dollars' worth of economic development for 100 million. I think you guys have insinuated that this is very profitable to the developers. I think they've mispriced the value of the water. And I'd also like to say another thing, too. I've been to Seawag meetings. I'm not really an eco person, but some of their experts have said that when you recharge this water, it don't automatically show up. It takes something like 20-some years. So that's a fallacy. And here's the bad precedent. You know, the council went from .34 to .17. And what that is, is they're taking away our margin and our reliability of our water system. And, you know, I think you can hold a gun to your head and make a good judgment that, you know, there's going to be more 1,000-acre requests, and they're probably going to get them. So the thing is, there isn't a lot of water out here. Some foolish people have written some articles saying there's all kinds of water. There's the same amount of water, 15,000 acre feet, that was here in 2015. And as you start divvying it up, you know what you're really going to do? You're going to screw the Upper Verde River. And that's the wildlife up there, and that is important. That's as important as the Dells.
Your time's up.
Thank you, sir.
We have time for three more.
Next three speakers are Gordon Bond... I'm sorry, Jeff Martin, Gordon Bond, and Barry Weintrup?
Have to kind of squat a little bit. Okay, so we've talked a lot about preservation. By a raise of hand, who's for preservation of archaeological and historic resources? City council, look at everybody here. I have contacted every single person on this city council about the archaeology that rests on the ground and below the ground. Not one person has taken the time to meet with me about how we can preserve those, not only now, but for the future. This development that he's proposed, up north, to the south, in the center, all around it, there's archaeological sites. In the past year, there's been four archaeological sites that have been completely demolished. I was in Williamson Valley. Well, first of all, let me tell you a little bit about my background, as a lot of people know. I work full-time in archaeology. I've worked 15 years in experimental archaeology, and I've worked for numerous CRM firms and government agencies. So I know what I'm talking about when it comes to the preservation underneath the ground. I was out in Williamson Valley, and there was a rancher that came up to me when we were firing pottery. And this rancher told me that they were doing backhoeing and trenching for pipelines. Well, guess what they hit? They hit a stash of pottery and they found human remains. What happened? The developer didn't... The developer didn't report it, the development went on, and as a result, all of it was lost. So Jason can talk about preservation all he wants. Number one, we live in a desert. The desert is dry, resources run thin, and he's got to keep that in mind. But number two, I want to know what he is going to do about what's underneath the ground. I can tell you, if someone on this council or Jason is willing to meet me, I can put together a team of volunteer archaeologists to take care of that entire area and get it excavated properly before that development comes into place. Not one dime will be spent. Not one dime will be spent. Your taxpayer dollars will not go for this project. If anybody's willing to meet me, I'll be glad to meet. Give me a call. I'm sure everybody knows my website, primitivelifeways.com. I have my email address there. I'm really concerned about what's underneath the ground. Let's get surveyors out there. If the development starts getting going here, I can put...
10 seconds?
I can put together a site monitor to make sure that what's being pulled out of the ground doesn't get lost forever. Thank you. Let's get it done.
Gordon Bond?
In light of the time constraints we have, I'll forego my time and contribute my comments in writing to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Thank you.
Same. One more, Sarah?
Walt Anderson?
Walt will get the last word.
Well, I certainly didn't expect to have the last word, but thank you for that. I'm really pleased to see where we've gotten in this negotiation. This is what we were talking about several years ago, and we're getting there. And so I'm really excited about that. I wanted to point out the abundance of love and joy that people have for the Dells. It's typified by something like this. We've had a number of publications about the Dells, all of which, this place is special. It's not just the rocks, it's an ecosystem. And what we're trying to save here with that precious 500 acres is the beginning of a regional park and preserve to supplement what the city already has. We have a wonderful Parks and Rec Department. There are a number of people who have worked to save parts of the Dells through this. We have had some opportunities lost, but this is an opportunity we cannot lose. And then we need to build on it, to build that regional park and preserve that will make this place really exceptional. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
All right, well, I want to thank everyone for attending tonight. I want to wish you all a very, very Merry Christmas, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.